Operations meeting, August 5th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All the waiver. And please have a motion to accept the minutes for the business, finance, and operations meeting of August 20th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All the waiver. I'm excited about the agenda, this is through committee, subcommittee updates, are there any updates from policy?
Um, yes, we are gonna have another meeting on Tuesday, September 10th, from 9:00 to 11:00 in the green room of middle school, um, to continue with the I policies. Uh, also, I've been approached a lot about different questions for the policies and the length, but it takes a week meetings and whatnot, so, uh, I thought it might be helpful if I just gave kind of a brief review, uh, first, everybody from the committee as well, but anytime, I know schedules and whatnot don't always coordinate, but to attend the policy subcommittee meeting, um, in addition, just to give everybody a slight idea of what, you know, what goes on and how we come to these policies, um, like for instance, right now, we're working on I policy, so, we take an inventory of what we have in both either hand and online to see where we're at about policies, and then we compare those to like districts, districts who have worked with M.A.S., and who have similar committees set up, you know, similar regional style or similar attorneys, so, and then, um, if they have a policy we don't have, we review it to see what it is and how it fits, sometimes it might be a policy that we just have done with something else, and sometimes it's something we need to take a look at, but that's the case, we also refer to the M.A.S. law and COVID that existed on that, and make sure that we're up to date, um, and then in this discrepancy, sometimes we'll tweak it to fit our little district, and the complete schools, like we can deliver to schools who work along with our students, um, and after all, that happens, in some committee, that's when we bring in here for our discussion, which is what we're doing today. So I hope that helps you all, if you're understanding more, um, and I think you can reach out to Evans, Dick, um, Bill, Lisa, and myself, if there's any questions or anything we're not getting answered, is that it?
So what did you say?
Mine's all right.
You said in the green room for the school?
Yes.
I'm in subcommittee. Yes. Now, teaching line of confidence?
Um, not just time, we are planning to, uh, and we're getting, I mean, several in the next month.
Um, doing this, um, the next item is public credit. So move along to the superintendent days.
So, before we take our chairs over the last, uh, two weeks, you know, you had to be here and there, but I was something, first thing, I was here for around all the schools, checking, seeing how things were, the booths, I knew crickets, I think of Mr. Breck, I stayed with his best when transportation was always one of the big things, we get phone calls on, and how many phone calls do you get on transportation?
Eighty-eight.
So, shocking, that's just shocking, you know, in Merrimack, buses were a little bit late getting out, because kids transfer your bus historically, they were used to getting out on a seven, but a seven doesn't exist anymore, it's a different number bus, so there was a little bit of delay there in the afternoon, but they were, not a lot, I think my very first school, um, to see all the kids come in with those big smiling faces, it was pretty neat, it was pretty, pretty neat, so, uh, yeah, school year's off, it's a good start, and hopefully later on, some other news for today.
I'm sorry, yes, sorry, Ben, I am so sorry. Um, so the students who I talked to today, they're eager to learn about the new system instead of school, um, and we were talking before, but they figure out how to access it before school started, and it's cool, because you can see all your classes and whatever number, so it's definitely helpful for the freshmen, if they didn't really know, um, whether from sources, yeah.
So honestly, if I could be back on that, so that's one of the things, we know we're gonna hold parent tutorial sessions, and we'll do some quick hit videos as well, uh, but as Ms. Reddy said, my daughter figured out, my daughter figured out, they were given a username and password, they were able to hop onto Infinite Campus app, and go on to see their teachers, their courses, grades, now, the thing is, this is really important for anyone who's gonna watch this video, children know how to look at it, see it, our teachers are still learning how to put that information in, so, when I was over at Donaghy this morning, uh, Ms. Frances, the secretary of campus there, she said, it was amazing, at one point, I went one teacher, I put it, she get refreshed, all of a sudden, there were seven teachers, and by the time, when I got there in the morning, well, any teachers had to put in attendance, I talked to one of the middle school teachers as well, said the same thing, it was, it was need to be able to go through, and you can check each of your classes, so, you know, by the end of this month, attendance will be nailed down, they'll probably be able to get into some information in terms of, uh, the grades and assignments, but it's gonna take some time, my suggestion to parents, if they wanna hop in and start checking things out, just download the student app, ask your child what their username and password is, and you'll have that, you'll have it right there in front of you. Ben, great point, but we'll have, we do have information sessions at the end of this month, I think.
Yes, starting again in September, and up into October, and parents will end up having their own username and account, where you can see all of your students.
But if you're really itching to get in there, meetings, steal your child's, you can't do any harm by that.
I'm excited about the agenda, this is for creating meeting times, um, I wanted to revisit this, it was on the agenda last meeting, and, um, we ended up moving the meeting, the business meetings to 6:15, but I think, um, probably better if we just do until half, while we do 6 o'clock, 6:30, you know, um, 6:15 is just, it's not our time, um, and typically, the meeting later and later, every meeting, 6:30, 9:00, um, which is, you guys begin at 9:00, you can scan it, and the agenda's just gonna be getting along with building projects, um, policies that we're gonna keep reviewing, and sort of, and some budget in the springtime, um, and I don't want people to administrate here at 6:00, I think, um, so I was wondering, um, if we could reopen the discussion on that, about moving, um, meetings to 6:00, um, because that was originally spoken, and whether one was the 6:30 option.
I, I will, I will not get away from this, um, the chance that my husband is home, and he drives everybody everywhere, but he's, I can't, I'll tell you, we have a dog, he needs to get from cheer at 5:00 to dance at 6:00, so I don't have a lot of fun, so I have to get home to care of him.
Does anybody else have anything to add, or are we ready for 6:00?
I had, I, I'm happy with, 6:15 is better for me than 6:30, I, like, the administrators are up at 5:00, um, so it's really challenging for me to be here until 9:00, um, I meant, I have to bend the arm, um, but, no, it's your own 6:00, so, I would prefer 6:15, 6:30, um, I don't wanna keep it impossible for anyone else either, which, um, is why I can be a little compromised a bit, um, I'll see you every minute.
I'm just concerned that if we, you know, go, if we move the meetings earlier, that they're still gonna be ending around the same time, they have been, and if we try to keep them as short as possible, and I know we still need to debate all of the plans that we're, um, proving, but I just hate the meetings going to.
And I focus on anything that I do, because it's just, it's, but most part of the school, or, you know, with that, do you need?
I just, I would like to comment, as I didn't realize, we did 6:15 tonight, but I'm good with 6:15 or 6:30, if 6:15 helps people, I'm all for it, for 6:15.
So does somebody wanna make a motion, in some one direction or another, we can go on it, see if we're all, so.
I would be motioning. Um, I'm with the motion that we keep it at 6:15, with us being free the last night, um, I know it's our time, but it's what the difference is, but I wish we could keep our decision.
I can say. Um, is any discussion on that?
Would it be helpful, or I, I don't really have a dog in the race, because I'm retired, so I can be very flexible with, um, the schedule, whatever, submit besides, but I'm wondering, would it be more helpful, uh, to have the finance committee meet at the end of the meeting and sign, as opposed to, uh, coming 15 minutes earlier? I'm just waiting for someone to comment on that, if that helps, let it help, if it doesn't help, then let's move forward.
Cool. Um, as it stands now, if we do our meetings at 6:15, and we do finance at 6:00, I don't need to, so I'll have to touch base to a break anyways, either after the meeting or during the day.
So it'd be better for you if we did that at the end of the meeting anyway, is that on hearing? Okay.
I'm very surprised, because at my age of 10, I'm like, I think, okay, so surprised, surprised you didn't mention that, splitting my dates between members here, that makes sense to me, to try to make it a little easier for us, uh, we'll do a lot with whatever it wants, where the motion's on the floor, puts up all, what was splitting the difference in that one far.
So Emily, your motion, any good discussion? Okay, so all in favor, we can be at 6:15? I'm trying to change my.
This is being at 6:15, and some committees after this is being.
Correct?
Yeah.
That was a good motion, was it?
Yeah, that was, that's exactly true.
Oh, it's fine.
Sure. So should we go on that as well?
I don't, I don't think they have a set time for it.
Right, but then I have to post a time, so I'll say.
I like the way you're all thinking, that means we have to keep offering.
Okay.
No worries.
So the next item under is district curriculum accommodation plan revisions.
All right, so I have, in my hands, a draft, uh, this is by no means a final version, uh, but it's a draft that has been brought to our school administrators, and in the spring, and then now in fall, we're asking them to spend some time with various groups of faculty members, and then eventually the site councils, to gather some feedback. Um, the district curriculum accommodation plan, and at this point, we're just here informing the committee that we're sort of going through this process, uh, when we do have a finalized, uh, D cap, we will bring it back to the committee for a book, uh, it is a requirement that every district in Massachusetts has a district curriculum accommodation plan, the D cap, um, what it looks like can vary greatly, um, however, over the last maybe five to six years, many districts have revisited, uh, their structure of their D cap, and how they utilize a D cap to make it more consistent with changes that the state has pushed forward with tiered systems of support, and universally designed for learning, instruction, frameworks, and that really sort of led this on, and upon coming here at the Tuckett, and in conversations, and recognizing if we revisit our curriculum, we also need to revisit how we made it accessible to students, and that is done through a D cap, and the way this is organized, it gives a general overview in the first two pages, and then it breaks it down by school level, so there's a high school section, there's a middle school section, and there's an elementary school section, uh, and within each section, they talk about resources, structures, and services, we talk about design of instruction, um, and the various supports that are available, and the point of the D cap is to make it, is to outline a very clear system and method to getting student support without identification, that everything available in this is available to any student, regardless of whether they have an IEP, whether they have a 504, or whether they're an ELL student, or whether they're male, female, it doesn't matter, and that anything we identify here is what any family or student could expect to have available to their child, in order for them to access curriculum and continue to make progress. A D cap is not meant to accelerate children, it's not meant to remediate based on a disability, that's what special ed is for, so there's all these components, but a D cap is meant as a resource both for staff, so they understand what they should do, what they can do, and then, um, for parents and kids of what they could expect. So there's a lot here, uh, certainly, I wouldn't expect comment on it this evening, you just get it into your hand, a lot of this is in draft form, some of this is going to get changed and altered as we have further conversation, we hope, maybe by September, we come back to the committee with a finalized version, that, that we can bring forward to, uh, at the same time, you know, a lot of districts associate D cap with what they call their IST, or instructional support team, which is a team of teachers at every level that would meet and discuss students who might be struggling, both academically and socially, emotionally, and what types of solutions they might try, that certainly is part of this, um, but from that process, for instance, a student does not get a D cap plan, a D cap is the district's accommodation plan, and this is a resource for everyone to refer to, to think about what is possible and what the I cap is, um, and I can see that already from the work we did last year and this year, there's already a couple of things that will probably be outdated, so.
If you attended complication, I've had a conversation on equity versus equality, this speaks to the equity part, so making sure we meet students where they're at, challenge them where they're at, if you just give everybody the exact same thing, some students aren't gonna beat that, some students are already far beyond that, and so the first purpose of the D cap is just to reemphasize a whole part, we need to meet students where they are, and provide that equity, and you could find in years, while there are things like routinely used instructional strategies, that these would be things that would be in place for every student, so, to, to start from Tony's point, um, some of it is provided to everyone, and then it goes, but not every student needs to leverage it or access it at the same level, but they have availability to it, and then, it goes in a little bit further, and there are some specific supports that would be available to anyone if they were directed to it, or if they were connected to that, to support, whether it be counseling services, whether it be reading support, whatever, like.
Any questions? The next item on the agenda is, um, the, um, school committee goals, so we have it, um, school committee goals, and, um, just making sure that we visit them, so. Anybody have a chance to look them up?
Not sure what we're doing, that is, we're 18 and 19, we actually, each person identified that they thought that we did well, not so well, needs improvement, they were collated, when they came back, any large discrepancy was supposed to be discussed in this forum to the public, and then they were given, it's not, oh, when they were filed away, so I'm not sure why they're wrong to not give, that's what we went through, the protocol, and what we're supposed to do, once you people have it from actual, you made them up, since it 's not quite up to.
Is our goal to meet, I mean, is the, is the agenda so we make goals, do we need or if we want to keep some, do we need to, um, change the community type duty?
From my contract, you're also supposed to be set annually, I haven't started so, um, and I, obviously, I have, certainly, no, how much of that process is actually there, so, uh, or, or you feel, well, it goes, well, it goes, but really, what I do is I need, I have some, but, I need for some, and then I.
So, I think based on that, as well as the D cap that we had received, and had that discussion about the things we had, had met, we need to have a conversation, not just about whether we want to keep these goals, but whether there are other things, like last year was the first time we built set goals as a committee, so I don't have any, and we did a whole great storm about where we wanted to focus, and that took a while, um, so, I think it needs to be, in my opinion, more than just we wanna stick with some of these, if we didn't tell you not that, but I would like to see us go back to our charter, if you will, like where are we going this year, where we want as a committee, as well as, um, you know.
Remember, document our goal, those goals, and obviously, nothing to do with goals we set for ourselves, the goals we set for ourselves last school year, if you guys wanna do it again, I think it was 2009, part of the state, it didn't have to be, wasn't mandatory, you don't have to do it every year, first, if you wanted to do it this year again, yes, then I would think that you would want to provide another set of goals, according to what you had for answers, the ship, most of you thought that these were accomplished, that's what all our discussion with time has brought, so if you wanted to do another self-evaluation, do it yearly, then yeah, that's, that's our provider, it was the school committee, it's not a mandate from the state, so last year's goals, uh, what we did or did not do, aren't even discussed, so we will want that, you wanna do another one, the ship?
I'm not sure another one is necessary, I mean, I've been really impressed with the Infinite Campus in terms of communication, that, that seems to be something that's gonna be ongoing, to be evaluated, and to actually see how valuable I think it is, uh, we are updating policies, and still have hundreds of pages of policies that need to be updated, so that's an unfinished, uh, the code of conduct, it's just a matter of whether the principals are actually gonna do their job based on, uh, the code of conduct, in terms of curriculum, I'm pleased to say it's the first time in decades that we have, uh, the same curriculum for all three elementary schools, so we have, I scored an A+ in that area, but that still needs to be monitored and evaluated to see who's doing a really fine job at that, I'm very content with continuing all four of these, uh, to see that we have some measure where we can evaluate something with a real A+ on that, and then, if, if that is accomplished, then I could see us moving on to some other goals.
So, just, one on the third goal, we actually capture a little bit if we review section B of the policies.
And you sent out, and you sent out the code of conduct to all those students, or they don't know what this is, but this is the, uh, not the, this is the example, so.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
That one we actually finished, like, less than ever, I mean, like, our sort of calls, and what, how we are, how we can expect each other to treat each other, and even things as well as how the public can expect us to act, and like, what steps to follow, like, that is all over under, um, those caps.
I agree, that's, that's, you know, refreshing, Mr. Hahn, that's, these are all fallen, all of last year's, it's fallen.
I kinda like them.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a.
So, so I think, I agree that what we were given was last year's goals, and we did do an evaluation, I don't completely agree that they're all completely done, because I think there were some thoughts that some of these, um, were a work in process, so I think we do, as a committee, in my opinion, need to look at which ones do we want, certainly update policies, that work is continuing, so maybe we just talk about what the next steps are to that, um, curriculum, even, communications was not the school communications, it was how does the school committee communicate, I don't, like, I don't, nothing to anybody on the communications of the committee, but I don't think we did a lot of that, so, I think it makes sense for us to reevaluate our goals, and to set either some new ones or continue on some of these, I don't know how that works, so we do that in a small group, and then share it, I don't know if we do this at the meeting, um, but I think it's, we're in an education setting, which, it seems like everything should constantly be manned, thinking about purposely doing things, so to say we're done, and you don't need to do them again, I agree with that.
I agree with Chris, and I, and I also agree with the communications, and I am in the communications, it's not a plus, and I just, it's a, handling that Facebook page, and I'm not, I don't do Twitter, so I'm like, a little, I mean, that's definitely my area right there, and I, it's overwhelming, and I don't exactly know how to implement that as well as I should, so, any, if we can alter it, or give me, I don't know, a little help on that direction, maybe, on what, you know, we should expect to give out to people, you know, all of the postings, and, because I do try to post things, and that, I mean, I barely know what Facebook handle myself, so it's just, I'm trying to get away from it, but I know it's part of my job here, so.
So I'm gonna kind of play devil's advocate about that, not that I don't think communication's important, but with, um, all of the other stuff that we do have going on, if we can't prioritize this as a goal, that maybe it's something we should set aside for now, that if we feel like the administration is, you know, reaching out a ton through Infinite Campus, through Twitter, through meetings and stuff, if we feel like that is engaging people, not necessarily in our committee, but in the process that we're just a part of, I don't hate to set it that aside, if we aren't gonna commit to doing it, or, like Dina said, kind of make strategy and like, put it in the forefront, and put a little more energy and effort as a group.
I don't know how to say it any clearer, maybe I'm confusing everybody, those were last year's goals, they've started, they've, so if we want this year's goals, we could ask Mary in, actually, to bring last year's in, if we wanted to take a look and see what we thought last year, to help us serve as a template to follow the path of seven objectives, that would be fine, if we wanted to do them every year, that's fine too, but last year was last year, we don't say right now we're doing better than last year's, because there were seven goals for 18, 19, 18, 20, so we go from here, so, it would require maybe, somebody said, well, I'll give the chair, the goal for the school committee for the year 19 and 20, start from there, if you wanna do it now, or later on, or we can do it anytime you want, there's no time factor either.
Chris, um, so I would, I would suggest then that we think about this for next time, and that we all come up with some goals that we think might be something the school committee, they could be a continuation of last year's, or they could be something new, or, none of us feel that we need to have any goals in that session, but I do think it's a good thing to have a holy document that we're actually trying to better ourselves and.
So one of the, I think, there's a few different things here, is, I personally think this needs to be updated, it's from 2018, 2019, um, so we need it 19, 20, um, I don't know, putting together a subcommittee to do this is good, and then they can bring everything back to school committee meeting.
I don't know, putting together a subcommittee to do this is good and then they can bring everything back to the school committee meeting.
Where we have a communication goal and a communication subcommittee, a policy subcommittee, policy goal, a curriculum committee, subcommittee, a curriculum goal, we start there, maybe some of the subcommittee meetings, address, maybe what we want to accomplish as goals and then bring it back to the committee about goals. I mean, why do we have a separate subcommittee, another subcommittee in addition? Just hope that it's just on, so we can be able, I mean, it's a session we should all have, we got it off board. But start, start somewhere. Or at least have one of each of those subcommittees represented on this school, usually as a subcommittee, as a goal, assigned at home. I was, I was thinking that maybe we just, next time, just maybe anybody can email you goals that they have or what we've discussed in a group setting and then from there, I think we decide we need to send this to the subcommittee. So I think that those meetings we have in a group setting, probably is the most productive.
I think, I think I agree, you know, I definitely agree because I also, I guess what I was, in my head part, that's what I was figuring out, but also some of the stuff around teaching, learning and accountability, like that subcommittee is, you know, really more of getting information out, it's not necessarily, like, that's not where policy is specifically the school place per. Like we don't, aside from the budgeting piece, we don't have a say over the, some of the specifics of the stuff that is coming out to us in the teaching curriculum area. So I would be, after, since I felt like last year our curriculum goal even was probably the most challenging and especially measurable, so I would feel, I would hear what everyone else had to say about other things, not just them.
So someone like to make a motion? So I'll make a motion that until next meeting, if there's a desire we can put four goals to Mary Ann, we discuss them the next meeting.
Sir.
So I think we probably have a lot of discussion.
So would Mary Ann need those by the, what is it, the 12? Or you wouldn't have to have that in the 12? I just want, I want to clear up one thing. So in order to be in the, how, how the last day would help to like the, what do they need to be?
I think it would be nice to have the package just so that everybody has them visually apart.
So just saying, have lots of ideas, you know, to Mary Ann, Tuesday, September. That's a place to add, if I want to point this to you. So Chris made a motion to accept the, um, all of them.
Okay, so next item, it's, uh, the building project.
Thank you, yeah, manager. So the building project, it has been quite some time since the community's heard what was going on with the building project. There's a very, very good reason, and it's not that we haven't been working, it's that we were waiting for the design to reach 50% to submit that to the MSBA October. Once they go and they see that improvement, then we start putting, bridge, puts those, starts putting those things up for bid. But starting tonight, all the three towns have a sort of, slightly meeting tonight, so two weeks from now, on Monday, I'll start, I'm going to meet West Newbury, I'll be, I'm going to update where we are. You're about to hear some very important information, talk about the next item, about, probably the biggest information regarding the building. I think I did not share, but last week, if I don't just, what the MSBA did, I called the MSBA with their OPM regarding some things we might be looking to do in front, turf in front, because it's always been a, it's a brilliant area that if we wanted to turf in front, we'd have to get money, people want to donate money to turf in front. Because the scope of the project has is just grass right now. We know that we might have turf, ideally in front, all the front fields. So the reason being we have that on the front is because it can be used all the time by youth sports, adult sports. Everyone can use it all the time versus what we have now is we have to cycle through, we have to schedule it so there's rest time. And so a lot of the, so certainly pipe stave and we also a little bit with the pines, there's issues with fields just being put up. There's certain issues with our, you know. Anyways, the long short is, I did not want to put the school in position, so if someone offered to give us money to do that in front, I didn't want to put us in a position where if someone gave us a half a million dollars that the state would take away, a half a million dollars from our hand. And they said because they only reimbursed about eight percent, or they reimbursed eight percent of our site cost, that's not an issue, if someone could donate that money, that would not be problematic, keep that in, they, we can work into the budget. But all of that, we can't really determine until we start to work to find out how expensive things are. So a year from now, two years from now, a much better idea, if the money's already in the budget for building projects to turf there. If it's not, a much better idea, how much money we need, those groups that want to donate to us, we have that opportunity, but our dogs need that a lot. So that was a really big phone call conversation, very big, a lot of conversations. Then also, we had started some conversations on what the classrooms would look like, just started conversations. We're still trying to nail down the entryway. We had extensive conversations about locks on boards, we're writing that in the newspaper. That was, that conversation for about an hour, two hours, two and a half hours, just about. Everything on the outside, who gets access, who doesn't get access, what to put in, back with the public safety. So they're all in the group, but it's a whole, we are meeting three on a Wednesday and I think next Monday is a visioning group just on technology that will help direct what we're putting in at this point in time. We know what we want, the maximum bandwidth, we might want to just go over the cloud instead, but we also recognize that in three years, a lot will change. So we're not going to start purchasing anything from now, which is not exceptionally planned.
Just to piggyback off the turf field, is anyone on the building committee calling in over to find out the cost? And the, actually they used coconut on there, which is a much healthier product than the shredded tires and, and a lot of other schools.
So a couple of people have actually brought that up, right, that if you're playing, if you're goalie, there's a, there may be a connection.
Sixty middles that had six high school female athletes, all six went to college, they all have cancer.
Redoubles, I think they were all goalies. So that's one of those things that we've talked, we've talked about quite a bit and it's, so different turfs, there's different foundations that you can put in, it's green sand, so they're not maintenance rate, they have to be maintained. There's still things you have to put down, but anything that would be, kind of, essentially, we know that those tires, the recycled rubber that they would drop down there, apparently that might, might have been a cause of that. So obviously, we're not going to use things like that. Coconut, I've heard that used in several different fields. There's actually three different types of turf, I'm learning more and more about artificial turf. Sometimes field hockey has its own different type of turf that it plays on, but we're not going to have that luxury of picking the turf just for this one sport. It's going to have to be a multi-purpose type of turf, but anything that we put in there, it's going to be several things. One, me being me, philosophically, I'm going to look at this and want to make sure that it's, it's green as it could possibly be. But I mean, from an ecological standpoint, not color, from an ecological standpoint, it's not going to have a negative impact on our environment.
Well, I think Andy would probably help you out in terms of price and quality.
And when we've been, we've, they sent us, they gave so much schools to look at and even with schools that are fairly traditional, I will be visiting a lot of new schools just to see what's in there, what the people who are in them like, what they don't like, fields what they like, what they don't like, because I think that's the best way to learn what do you want the most of them.
It suggests as we go as a committee, though, that's two, three years away. And I can guarantee you we'll be researching what the best turf is, best for the apple that they're done. It may not even exist at this point, since it's two, unless it's on the road, even though it's a trade to rub it. I can feel the best it can be 2022.
And there's one very important piece of information. So our transportation is one of our favorite organizations, right, to keep our roads, they fill the potholes and all that and they stay home for 113. It turns out that on the calendar and the schedule of that D O T, Roland, 113, from the front of the middle school all the way down to the bridge, is slated to be done. Once that road is done, you cannot, unless it's emergency, you cannot cut through that road for five years. So we have had to accelerate a project and coordinate with the town of Roland to make sure we put in this exact pipe that we were going to have for our new water system, put in, and then this will happen within a month, it will come in and drop, so, you know, there's no shovel ceremony, right? I guess that's unofficially the first new part of the, of the building that's going to go in.
People aren't digging till the spring, it's probably going to be like next, this weekend.
Yeah, it's going to, because we just learned, we, we learned about this last Thursday or Friday. Thursday, sorry, last Thursday. So that's, here's how to take pictures, it's the first meeting.
So they're going to do that this fall?
At night, so.
No, no, not the pipe.
Yes, at night times, at night times, they're going to be, aggro gets already contacted, I think they're going to start maybe next.
It's not milling, probably within two weeks.
Yeah. Yep, so Main Street and Roland, if you're traveling down that way at nighttime?
I'll let you come through Main Street.
As you unmute.
And let us tell what one is coming to build, it's golden, Chris.
W T Rich.
We have to come up with that money.
No, it's part of the project.
We just sent that bill to.
I sent it to W T Rich. Because it's part of the project that they're building, this was in that, so we just kept it down a little earlier.
They have a meeting on Thursday, they, you know, just to send that bill. I should come mute for Protext or O P M, he said, just give us the bill, okay. So, thank you.
Any questions? Next item on the agenda is the initial borrowing for the building project. Can we get into that?
So I'll let, I'll just introduce Mr. Brack again. Cannot thank him enough for his expertise in orchestrating this whole process and collaborating with each of the towns' finance directors. But today, we received that phone call, tells all kidding, the first chunk of $50 million. Here's what we can do, the list of people who were bidding on it was very impressive. And of course, when the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is backing you, that's going to be expected. So Greg did just fag this drop with us together. He's run numbers, as soon as he knows I was pasting them all, dataing, providing the exact numbers so I can run things, so he can email the same stuff, but I'll turn it over to him so he can go into detail of what has to be done here.
Thank you. As the superintendent alluded to, for the national lock, we are required to go to bid. The basis is simply nothing more than to, you're borrowing money and you're getting this, how much you're going to have to pay back. We had nine respondents and we couldn't believe how tight it was. The lowest one had an effective, effective interest rate, I think, of 2.62, nine spots away, I think it was 2.73. That's how tight it was, it was the minimum, he said, so maybe it is fidelity, bank, Scotland, Citigroup. We were the largest public offering in the country today. That's something to do with here in West Newbury very well. So as a result, the, Vaughn Council reviewed it, our financial advisor, myself, and through all this morning, miserable financial was the winner. With that win, you'll notice the third paragraph where it says we're borrowing 46 million, 965, even though the offering was 50 million, because in addition to that interest rate, they also gave us a premium of a little over $3 million. So that we do, what we do with that $3 million is apply to us how much we need it, so we don't have to borrow $50 million. We're actually borrowing 46 million, 965, but we're getting the effective rate of $50 million, money going back now. So luckily, we were guessing at 275, we were telling the town way back when, we were hoping, we were hoping. And that was a long time ago, in that timeframe, things went as high as five. And right now, it's about as low as it's gone. So I feel we got very, very lucky. As a matter of fact, the financial advisor goes, I don't know how you guys did it, but you nailed this one. You couldn't have picked a better date to do this. So that being said, this is the first $50 million offering. Under arbitrage rules, you have 18 months to spend, that means 18 months to spend the borrowed money. That works for 46 million, 965. Any interest we earn on that or any MSBA reimbursement is not subject to arbitrage. We will not be touching that money, that money will be sitting on the sidelines as we go through the project. It is flexibility as we go towards the end. Somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 months from now, 14, 15 months from now, we will begin to process again for another 42 million, which the state has also agreed to back. All right. So we won't have to do all those little hoops again, so that's nice. It'll be a lot easier the second time around, you lay a lot of the ground for them. So based on that, what will happen was, we will hopefully read this vote into the minutes tonight. I'm hoping you will vote for it, Mary Ann will sign it. It'll go back to the financial advisor, Vaughn Council tomorrow. They will take that vote to prepare actual notes and bonds of which we'll have to have signed and sent back to them. I need the signatures of Mary Ann, I'll need the signatures of Lisa, and I'll need the signatures of the superintendent. So offering, we signed a whole bunch of these, so they do one for every year, this is 30 years now. She'll pick them up on Monday, settlement date will be September 13th, and on September 13th, we will officially have the money, the rock and roll going on. So I don't know who wants to read this in the minutes, I wish I could say wait to read it, but I don't think that's allowable.
So the whole packet?
Yeah, so I guess wherever you, whoever you pick to read it is fine. I don't think you have to read the number, you can say as follows and read that, that's why I handed it out. This is the motion.
I moved, except the thing that Dina said.
Okay.
All right, I, the district secretary of the school committee, the committee of the Kentucky Free Council District, Massachusetts. The district certified that at a meeting of the committee held September 3rd, 2019, at which meeting all members of the committee were duly notified and at which inform is present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. The first vote is?
If you could read them all.
Right. Oh, I agree with all.
You can read the whole thing.
Okay, voted, now we hereby determine, according to GL.
Chapter.
Chapter 70B, that the amount of the cost of the design and construction of the new middle high school authorized by a vote of the committee passed on March 19th, 2019, not being being paid by the school facilities grant, is $93,582.24. And we hereby approve of the issuance of the notes and bonds not to exceed such amount under said G L Chapter 70B. Further voted, that the sale of $46,965,000 general obligation state qualified school bonds of the district dated September 13, 2019, the bonds, to Mesero Financial Bank at the price of $50,163,081.85 to accrue interest if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. Bonds shall be payable on September 1st in years under the principal amounts in bare interest that the respective rates has follows. Further voted, that the bonds maturing on September 1st, 2045, September 1st, 2047, September 1st, 2049, each term bond shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows.
Do I have to read that part?
Further voted, that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale preliminary official statement dated August 22nd, 2019, a final official statement dated September 3rd, 2019, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the district treasurer, the and hairliver ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted, that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at adoption of the district upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted, that the district treasurer and the members of the committee be and hereby are authorized to execute, deliver, and continue disclosure undertaking in compliance with S C C Rule 15 C 2-12, such forms as may be approved by bond council to the district, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference to the bonds for the benefit of shareholders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted, that we authorize and direct the district treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the district treasurer, the bond council, and council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax offense status of the bonds and to comply with federal securities laws. Further voted, that each member of the committee, the district secretary, and the district treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a getting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and intent for the meeting, which inevitably include the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk to each of the member towns of Roland, Merrimack, and West Newbury, collectively the town clerks, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public in all hours in or on the municipal buildings and to the offices of the town clerks and district secretaries are located, or in accordance with an approved alternative method, a notice was spread or approved by Massachusetts Attorney General Setford in 940 C M R 29.03 parentheses 2, or 940 C M R 29.03 parentheses 4, as applicable, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with G L Chapter 30A 18-25 as amended.
Hold on, move the argument.
Okay. Any special?
Just a one question, probably by ignorance, but I think Greg told us, tell everyone. First definitely, there is an interest rate of, today the interest rate across the board is 2.62.
2.62.
On average.
Did you say on average for that?
No, no, just for the first 50.
That's what I was saying. First 50, there's no relevance involved, so the next 40...
22.
Whatever, that could be 20, no. So, you were extrapolating as well...
Well, no, what I'm saying, based on what we told the public, so far we are on track for that. But I couldn't, I would have loved to grab the whole 92, wouldn't spend it with the 18 months, it would be a violation.
So, ultimately, at the end of the day, we were saying 2.75, well, there came in 2.62.
And as a math major, you'll say during these 30 odd years of payment, what you've given us for an interest rate each year, we collectively put those together, 2.62.
No, that minus the $3 million.
Minus 2.2.
Right, so, I mean, if you were doing $15 million, 2.75, it's a vote to 46, 965 and 2.62.
So, just to sit on a yield investment, it's been four years, like greater the interest rate.
That's why I said interest rate's totally at this cost, so pre using part of that, so that's why it looks like it's more, but it's not.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, did we get a second on that? I moved the topic. You did, okay, thanks.
I believe that's everything for us.
Okay.
So, the next item on the agenda is C F T A.
Yeah, so, you know, we're up around the time of the year where it's still warm outside, so we have to put on the heat and the oil of the bill stool. The other buildings seem to still be in good shape, but just wanted to let you know, we will be updating continuously, obviously, members shift from year to year utilization because our district program also shifts. So, I just wanted to let you know that we will be doing the contingency plan to update it, and plan to present that to you in October, with the updated plan based on enrollment as currently in each school, in each grade level, and then all the scares that could happen, if any one of the elementary schools were realized. Okay, I'll send that.
So, we have, the second question, the second part of the discussion, is we need to go on, policies, J Q. So, policies, and...
What are the second policies?
So, policies, policies, so policy J Q, student courses, so...
Move J Q.
Any discussion? Over. The next policy, J Q, this is student fees, times, charges, and first second.
Move J Q.
Second. Any discussion?
So, the third bullet's low down that, without, I know we changed a lot above, I think, but on the bullet, how do we define that? How do students know if we need that order? Or can you just say, exactly, develop a campaign plan with students, or... Well, we discussed the definition of the indigent, if we refer to other policies from similar standpoint, and we decided that indigent refers to students that are believed to have financial... Our concern was that you can't just write up a bill and then say, I don't have the money to pay for it. It's more exclusively to define those students that, as we discussed before, the indigent students concede that it's manager, and it's one saleable. So, I go back to my initial question from last time, how do we, as a district, like, I think somewhere here needs to be defined how we as a district define those students and what are policies, like somehow it needs to, maybe that could be a policy or defining that? Is there somewhere policies that, definitions, or glossary, or some sort?
So, the indigent student is one of the elements, because we all agree with that.
And it's brought up before this, though, right?
The term.
Yes, before J Q, I'm assuming.
But, obviously, we know for lunches, it's pretty important, so we know those, although, we know those, teachers are not supposed to, those students still have to afford, so because of that, we've always used a process where someone can't afford a sport, field trip, whatever it may be, that they get hardship waiver from us, and that's something that we need to put, oh, you want a policy for that, we call it a policy for that, that's just a practice that we've always used internally to help support those students when they have the funds. We tweaked this around quite a bit, because you could take out determination, you're accepting our development plan for all students, so we're trying to qualify, kind of capture all, try to define it, that'd be hard, because I don't think of policies as, there's students who are students over here, who have students who are suddenly in a financial crisis, we don't know about, you still have to have that option to come from hardship.
So, I guess my point is still the same as the last time, that how do, how are these students identified? Is it a student decision? Decision, and you know, like, how, I know what the word means, but how do we as a district define that, and go through the proper channels to make sure that the students truly need help? You know, maybe we just say something like we did at the end of the first paragraph, that, you know, school administration is the one who makes those decisions.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if you're talking about here for smaller things such as this, I don't know why we, why we should use anything different than we do for a bigger now for kindergarten and for athletics, which is basically the state side, they scale, they fund child fund from the Division of Children's Services, and they update it every year, it's basically by the number of people in your family, if you have to make this much of money, that's, anything over that is good. And then what we've always done as a policy, because federal budget program is, I'm going to put this wildly generous, I don't feel that it should be appealed, so we just do a percentage basis of that, if you make less than 25% of that number, you're waived, 45 to 50, you may have, 25 to 75, 75 to 75, above 75% of that number, you pay off. And the application that we have available is because of that category on the F B's, we don't get very often, it's always for kindergarten or athletics, but, because we don't have a lot of these, not anymore, but it's certainly applicable for that form, it will be updated every year, it's available, we don't get a lot of requests, but we do, turn them around in the day, everybody understands why. So, I mean, it's one part, one time to that.
Well, I think we just, as a district, need to define who says, oh, never mind, you don't have to pay it, and who says, well, yeah, given your circumstances, like, I just think by bringing it up at all, we have to define how.
So, I have one question about, by saying unless we buy the school administration, isn't that implying, that why not say that, that the schools in that next, a school may exactly be or charge only 100, the schools, to me, that word schools there implies school administration as stated above, but can then make those decisions, but then should that follow?
Was it, I'm sorry, was it this policy, like, with other school districts, the attorneys that deal?
Yes, mask is approved, it's also a general law area.
At the end of the day, we're all in agreement that we're going to help out the students who need good help, just trying to try to...
I mean, if we're using it in other sections, I think...
I can't find it.
So, assuming this holiday intention is a day now, just to allow you to special from what's known, you said you have some policies potentially being, if it's something that's regular, you might have to change, the law's not the one.
This is actually not, this is not, we don't have to, is that correct?
Procedure, I guess, be updated every year, I mean, that's what we have to try to do. More than half of the J policies, we did not have, we all, I think, that's one possibility, is the committee can direct the superintendent to develop a procedure along with business manager and school administration to implement the policy, and the committee can be updated annually, or, yes, there are changes, potential changes to what that procedure is.
Good idea.
Okay, so, anybody want to take a motion?
I already moved J Q, and it was seconded, and I guess we're ready for a vote.
Okay, so, all in favor on voting, if you have any comments, comment in line. And Emily?
So, number one for this, state, Emily, which means it goes to the third.
I think after the thirds.
Right, if it's change, and someone is voting that's...
Right, so, so look back for third.
Oh.
And then change.
Oh, okay.
So, the policy is a dog.
So, I have a question, and it appears in the first thing, but it appears in the next one, it's down below where it says the first reading and reviewed, but then, so we've looked at this before, but then when I asked you this before, I'm sorry, where the next one it says previous, previous adoption again, but then when it says reviewed, that's not by a whole tin.
No. So, then it is approved, say, first reading. Those of the districts, so we looked at, say, first reading, the date, second reading, they...
But if it's reviewed, should it, should it, if that's going to stay on there for the permanent?
No, I'll...
If it doesn't, should I say by the...
There's been a lot of questions for these meetings, polls, and second reading, second reading, we go to vote the third, maybe, you know, it's going to have to end here, you know, especially if it's assigned, this is the first time we've reviewed it for reading.
But that's...
And so...
Okay.
So, it's passed?
Yes.
Okay, so the next policy is J R A student records.
Move J R A student records.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? The next one is I A instructional goals, can I have a motion?
Move I A instructional goals.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Next policy is I V democratic principles, can I have a second motion?
Move I V democratic principles.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think in the first paragraph, I think we're missing like, the comma and the and, because it's reading like a list, like, so it says, it seeks to, the first thing is dedicate students of debt and credit condition, but it says to foster recognition of individual freedom and social responsibility, aligns the core values of the district, and I think it's supposed to be that comma and the and, I think you have three things there, I'm reading that correctly.
I think you have three things there, I'm reading that correctly. Does that sound like it's, that, that is a policy for you, I understand, okay.
If I, if I vote, I want you to get it first. Good job.
Okay, so what do we?
Bring a comma after the word district, yeah, there's a, to add a comma to us.
So as amended?
Uh, move as amended, please.
Second. All in favor? The last, I'm sorry, the next one is I C, I C A school year school calendar, can I receive the motion?
Move I C, I C A school year county school calendar.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? The next one is I C, I C A dash P, central district wide calendar, can I receive the motion?
Move central district wide calendar.
Second, second. Any discussion?
If we're passing this policy, the actual.
Oh, this is great.
Because I looked, and I put my.
In the name of.
And I was.
Can you update everyone?
Can I?
Can you update everyone?
There's a big meeting Thursday, and it's all gonna happen.
Yeah, I'm tired of this, so I've called each person responsible calendar from each school. I called it to a meeting, I know it's the first week of school, I don't care, and we know all of it, but at least we're late, and we're not gonna have one person's on the group calendar, but there's supposed to be another person's on sheet, listen dates. Everyone's gonna be able to be on today, still on the sheet, that's fine. So I'll be on the group calendar, Mr. Buck is gonna be here as well, he'll put it over this weekend, interreading calendars so we can see different colors, and we work out to color code things, but Thursday, everyone's stuff will be in, so just as an example, if you just look at the district, the district did not have this today, it was the first day of school. Schools on the schools, some of the schools.
Instrumental music for the entire district was tonight.
For tonight. Some of the schools had, some of them didn't. So the district calendar will have different ones, so someone wants to see every single possible thing going on, like, there's right now on merge one, it's up, it's up there now, but all the schools don't have their stuff in there, on the merge one, and on the merge one, it appears in the district calendar, so today, there were fifteen items listed on there, and it's all different colors. Once athletics gets on there, the page will have fifteen or sixteen different things on the PRS district calendar, so it's, the district calendar's up there now, shows it, but after, we want to be able to click on a, any of the schools on the side, and see. Very good question.
Any other questions? Seeing any all in favor? Last policy is I D school day, can I receive the motion?
Move school day.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
So the second paragraph, committee.
Well, I said it's the second paragraph, it's capitalized, the rest of the document.
Talked of it in the first one.
I forgot that.
Yeah, I forgot.
It's too.
It's not in our current policy.
The third paragraph, it says that students will be admitted into the school building not less than fifteen minutes prior to the time of the day, do you mean not more than fifteen minutes? Because, I mean, that implies that. So like, what?
For the word fifteen minutes, what do you mean?
No, it's just, it's inconsistent with the sentence about the school bus, because it says they'll be admitted into the school building not less than fifteen minutes, unless the bus schedule requires earlier admittance, so you're already saying that they can be there, you know, anytime before fifteen minutes, so right now, I think you're supposed to say not more than fifteen minutes? Prior to the start of the school day, like, what is, what do you mean, when the build, fifteen minutes before the day starts?
Well, there's a quarantine school program, but also, you know, you start, um, at eight thirty-five, right, and drop off, and it starts at eight fifteen, so that's twenty minutes.
Say again, sorry.
The school day starts at eight thirty-five, and then drop off, and it's eight fifteen, so that's twenty minutes, and then there's the quarantine school program.
And I don't.
Drop off, that's eight twenty.
Yeah.
Eight twenty. Wouldn't surprise, would not surprise me if it, we have eight twenty, we have a box because, one's eight thirty-five, one's eight thirty, it has to do with the buses. But, if it's. The juxtaposition is not there.
Yeah, it's supposed to be not less than fifteen minutes, you know, I mean, think about.
Second, second. Second, second. Not more than.
Well, I, just some kid, like, we have four school programs. So I don't know, in many degrees, we look at what the intent is, or can modify this based on practice right now?
Right, so would you like, unless bus schedule require earlier admittance, say not, or would you like a change from into the school building not more than fifteen minutes prior to start?
That works, but I don't know if that's what we do, and what you just said does work, it's a language system, but we need to be consistent.
What is the rule? So I would say this would go back, so not more than fifteen minutes, unless we're comprised by the building administration. It's just relevant. This is, this is all written, but we built up now, most schools, student councils, the committee. That's why, that's why I think you have to say something about that. This is a building, building.
I mean, so many exceptions.
Right, right, right. Do we even need a paragraph then, now, when students are allowed to build things?
I would think that should be, or should be something that's picked up in the hand most, but it's not bad to fall back on policy if someone's dropping off, it's just that early, you say, you can't do that, right?
And then, just one more thing to the last paragraph, I think you're missing the word but after activities, because right now, it's not really, so occasion, certain students or groups of students may be released early for school activities, comma, but these exceptions must fit to a minimum, we either need a semicolon or.
Or period.
Or period, period, that's fine, too.
So we have motion, um, to, so we're gonna vote for the. All in favor?
Not to me, it doesn't have that.
With the changes, right?
All in.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
We're gonna vote again, sorry. So are we going? All votes, any votes? Okay, so the other comment again, it's been clear, so we will call vote, enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, base value of property, shared plans with the onshore meeting, as of the meeting, they have a detrimental effect on negotiating the position of the college board. See? Do you have a motion?
Yes.
I'm sorry, motion?
So, sorry.
Your one four?
Yes.
Yes.
Chris? Yes.
Okay, and we're not even.